It's 6:00 PM and we will call the Monticello School Board Meeting to order on December 19th, 2022. Please stand for allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
The agenda was set out prior to the meeting. Need approval of our agenda for the evening?
So moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa, second by Jennifer, for approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify, say nay.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Can we have a note that Candace is not here also? Next, we have a performance by our MHS Chamber Singers, so thank you very much for attending. The floor is yours.
Thank you. As stated, we are the Monticello High School Chamber Singers. We are a directorless group. We are all high school students. And just before we begin, we are all ensemble, so please raise your hand if you're in one or more, so two ensembles, and please raise your hand if you are in two or more or ensembles. Thank you. So we'll be performing one of our carols for you. We will be performing "Deck the Wall."
Deck the wall with bows of holly, fa la 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 la. Don, we now are gay apparel, fa la 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 la. All the ancients yule-time carol, fa la 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 la. In a blazing yule before us, fa la 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 la. Join the chorus, fa la 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 la. Follow me in merry measure, fa la 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 la. Ha la 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 la. May the old year passes, fa la 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 la. Hail the new ye lands and classes, fa la 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 la. Sing, rejoice, all together, fa la 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 la. This is all the wind and wax, fa la 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 la.
Now, we've got a national concert to go to.
We've got to mention, we do have a concert tonight that we will be... Right now. So thank you guys for having us, and we will now be leaving. Very sorry.
Good job, guys. Good job, buddy. Move forward with our next item. Actually, it's our student representatives. Both of them are in activities tonight, and we have an emergency stand-in running a little bit late, so we'll move forward. The arrival here from a student representative. So we have citizens' comments, so we're trying to do something a little bit different tonight that it announced last week due to some changing in funding, that we had additional dollars that came forth to the district, and we thought we had an effort to be transparent, have a little bit of open citizens' comments to have a discussion concerning these budget items, or if there's another citizen comment concerning something else, we'll address that also. Just a reminder, you're allowed three minutes, and that the board cannot respond to anything that you suggest, but our first citizen comment, somebody is David Decker, right? So go ahead, David. The floor is yours. If you'd just like to introduce yourself real quick.
Hello, I'm David Decker. I live in Monticello Township. I grew up in the Monticello School District. My comments are about school board meeting start times. I would like to see them starting later than 6 o'clock myself. I have a clipping from a school board proceeding of 1985. School board meetings then started at 8:15 at that point in time. Football games also started at 8 o'clock. I remember that growing up. I found a newspaper clipping from about 1980-93, when school board meetings started at 7. And I'm not sure what time football games would switch to 7 o'clock. But having grown up on a dairy farm, my dad milked cows, understanding why meetings, football games started at later times, 8 o'clock, 8:15. And I know there aren't the dairy farmers like there used to be, so 7 o'clock seems like a good time. The 6 o'clock time, to me, seems very early. I used to coach my children's soccer teams in the rec program in Buffalo. I disliked 6:30 start times because I worked for a courier company in the cities, and it was really tough getting to Buffalo in time for 6:30 soccer games. The 7:30 and the 8:30 games, when we had those games, those weeks, that was easy to get to. Today, I have spent all day in the Buffalo Hospital with my ex-wife's dad. He had a mild stroke yesterday. I was waiting for the nurse to come and get a final blood pressure check. He had gotten some medication about 4 o'clock. She said she was going to come back in a half hour, 45 minutes. I left a little after 5 o'clock so I could get here because I wanted to get that final reading to see if his blood pressure was coming down. So I really wish meetings could start at 7 o'clock. My idea of this earlier start time was even before last month's November's board meeting, when we had somebody, a board member, who was late. I had thought of this, liking it to start later, well before. I had thought of that before that. And I had learned that seeing the workshop meetings start real early also, it seems like it's real difficult, it certainly could be, for a board member to be on all those workshop committees when the meetings start so early. And that. Thank you.
Next, we have Jen Mackey.
First, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I think anytime we can gain perspective, especially when we're looking at change or addressing change, is good. I'm just here just to talk a little bit about budget cuts and impacts on music. I'm a 31st year, 31st year of teaching here in Monticello Music, 29 in beginning band. And I think everyone knows budget cuts are hard. They come about in many ways. In middle school, they came about for a big class of kids that were coming in about five, six years ago. And while we were able to maintain FDEs, we had to address the high class sizes everywhere. And so a new schedule will obviously have impacts that are unintentional. But when we lost instrument instruction and the ability for students to do band inquire, orchestra inquire, like we saw tonight, it impacts students. It impacts ways that we can't predict. But now we're farther in, and we've had a couple more FDEs that are impacting. So I'm hoping that if we're looking at bringing things back or reallocating in some kind of magical, you know, land that we might live in in another year, that we can see bringing back those opportunities for students.
Next would be Abby Bjorkland.
My name is Abby Bjorkland. I have been in the Monticello School District for 19 years and have taught 3rd grade at Little Mountain, and I'm currently teaching 3rd grade at Pinewood. The last few years have proven to be very challenging for our profession. I could list the ways in which educators have been affected, but more importantly, I want to focus on the ways in which our students have been impacted. The stress that COVID has had on our district's families has been significant. Our kids have brought those stresses to school with them. They are facing times of uncertainty at home, which is why it's more important than ever to provide a safe and consistent environment at school. Unfortunately, class sizes have continued to creep up. This results in obviously more bodies in the classroom, increased behaviors, and larger numbers of students not getting the targeted and explicit instruction they not only desperately need but also deserve. I can only speak from an elementary perspective, but we have seen large holes in their academic and emotional maturity, and therefore they need more frequent and intensive support from staff throughout the building. This need is across the board, whether a student is receiving enrichment services, special education services, Title I support, behavior interventions, or within the regular classroom. We need to provide more to meet the needs of all our students. Unfortunately, with the added stress and limited resources, fully staffing our schools has been extremely difficult. As an educator, I can look out into my classroom and see all the needs of my students, but I'm feeling frustrated and quite frankly disheartened that I'm unable to give them all of what I know they deserve. The time is now that we restructure our learning environments and make it a priority to address as many of these concerns as possible. We know we have a lot of catch-up work from the pandemic in addition to a changing world. And in order to make headway, I feel like prioritizing our staffing would be most beneficial in the long term. Keeping class sizes down, K-12, is going to result in more focused attention on individual students, which will lead to better learning outcomes and a greater number of students achieving the goals that we as a district have set as our vision of a learner. Thank you.
Next would be Bree Bagulkey.
I think I maybe didn't push submit on the document. I was like, I think that I for sure.
Oh, we have you on here.
Got it. Okay, perfect.
Just going to go together?
Excellent. Yeah, we're going to go together. Perfect. Good evening, Superintendent Olson and the board. My name is Joy White, and I have proudly been serving our district of Monticello for the past 20 years. I taught kindergarten for 14 years and am currently in the sixth, my current, I am currently in my sixth year of teaching 4th grade. I also have two children who attend the Monticello School District, Bennett, a 9th grader at the high school, and Brooks, a 6th grader at the middle school. Monticello has been a wonderful place to raise our family and call home for the past 20 years. Our strong and supportive school district is one of the most influential reasons we decided to build our home here and raise our family in this community.
I'm Bree Bagulkey, and I've been teaching in our district for 15 years. I've taught 1st grade, 2nd grade, 4th grade, and I'm currently teaching 5th grade. I also did a year in our nature-based program, the first year that it started. My husband Brett and I too chose to raise our family locally. We have a 9-year-old, Harper, and we have a 5-year-old, Lauren, who is in preschool. She also has hearing loss, so she has needed some special services along the way from the district as well.
We want you to know that we have both always spoke proudly of this great district from both an educator and a parent standpoint. However, we find this more and more challenging as class sizes continue to climb across the district. And to add to the stress of large class sizes, we are seeing the needs of students grow to a level we have never seen before. Needs such as mental health, low academic levels, uninvolved parents, frequent child protection reports, and the list goes on and on. We want to address the impact the large number of students in our classroom is having on us as teachers, and more importantly, the students that come before us each day. As student needs and classroom numbers rise, our district has also been taking away the few supports that classroom teachers relied upon to help with student success. Intervention paraprofessionals are no longer able to help our struggling learners in our math and reading classrooms. It's easy to forget about our high-achieving students, our paras, who are also used to enrich our curriculum and work with kids who already mastered the content. This was a great way to provide challenges to those higher achievers. Little Mountain does not currently even employ a full-time gifted and talented teacher. Please remember, these students are a number in each of our classrooms, and each number has a face, and each face has a story. And no matter that story, a face of a child that is a parent's most prized possession, and a child that deserves the best possible education.
So currently at Little Mountain, our high numbers in 1st grade are 27 students in a class, 25 in 2nd grade, 26 in 3rd, 28 in 4th, and 28 in 5th. in a class, twenty-five in second grade, twenty-six in third, twenty-eight in fourth, and thirty in fifth. Most of these numbers are the highest that they have ever been. Obviously, we know research shows that larger class sizes prove to make it more difficult for teachers to set the expectations for behaviors and just academic learning. And it's just really difficult to pay attention to each individual learner. Less, larger class sizes lead to less organization and more confusion for students in the classroom, which ultimately affects student learning. We see it firsthand each and every day. There has also been an uptick in behaviors and these behaviors are as high as we've experienced them. And it's not just the teachers experiencing it, but also our administrative team, our behavior team, our social workers. They experience these things daily, from hitting, kicking, swearing, being disrespected multiple times a day, all while we're trying to teach and build an environment where each child can learn, grow, and feel safe. This can be very overwhelming and scary for these students in our classrooms. Imagine these children walking into the classroom each day, each of them coming from a vast variety of backgrounds and stories. Take a Little Mountain fifth grade classroom where there's thirty students walking through the door. Four of them are new to country and learning English. Fourteen of them are below grade level in reading and math. Three are significantly above grade level in enrichment. Two are coming from such trauma that they often don't make it through the first fifteen minutes of a lesson. Seven are at grade level and there's a high possibility that three of them did not have dinner last night or are appearing at home to put them to bed so that they are healthy and ready for the next day of learning. Each and every one of these children are my responsibility to reach on an academic level, build a strong and trusting relationship with, and provide a safe place for them to learn socially and academically. And I want to make that happen for them. I love my students like they're my own, and our district's slogan is "Every Kid Every Day." And I assure you that that's the goal for all of the teachers across the district. But it is becoming somewhat out of reach and unattainable and at times unsustainable. We are stretched in and exhausted and worn out, and our students don't deserve that. They deserve the very best from our district every day.
I want you to consider inviting those same thirty students, thirty fifth graders to your child's seven-hour birthday party. Now, at this birthday party, you are expected to get all thirty of them to leave with a successful balloon figure created, a poem written, a book summarized, lunch eaten, a game learned and played, and most importantly, everyone returned home happy, safe, and healthy. You have no help at this birthday party, it is just you. The space you have to work with these children in is much too small. In fact, nine of them have to leave their belongings in the garage because the space was only made for twenty-one students. There is no floor space for them to work in collaborative groups, no areas to be creative and imaginative, but the thirty tables it takes to have the birthday party consume every ounce of floor space you have. So they can't work together. They must sit at their table the whole party. This is our reality every day, not a birthday party, but rather in our current classrooms. A reality that is pushing educators out of the profession at an exponential rate. It saddens me to share how often I hear my coworkers and friends and quite frankly myself talking and thinking about how it would be possible to stay teaching for the next ten years until reminder, until retirement and sometimes for the remainder of the year. This is happening right here in our district. Classroom teachers, sped teachers, administration, social workers, hero professionals, et cetera. We are losing teachers and staff at a profoundly high rate. This is largely due to high class sizes that in turn puts way too many needs, behaviors, stresses, all together in one room and is setting up our coworkers for failure.
Like Joyce said, finding teachers has become a challenge. Fifteen to twenty years ago, when we both started teaching in Monticello, there was an average of two hundred to three hundred applicants per job. In the last couple of years, we've had applicants of three, five, sometimes even zero people applying for jobs. This is very worrisome. How are we going to attract those quality teachers to put in front of this, our students? Because they deserve that each day. I can tell you that being able to promise a low class size will be one of the number one ways. It's a number one way that parents who are school shopping, what they're going to look for. Small classes is something that we use to take pride in within this district. We will not get high-quality teachers and new families in the district at the rate that we are currently trending.
And as we close, we know that your hands are somewhat tied as budgets across the state and nation are not properly funded in public education. We appreciate your time and dedication to this district. If our current budget surplus happens to fall in the hands of the district, we hope we have painted a picture of the dire need in our classrooms right now. We so badly want to be able to confidently live out our every kid, every day model again. We want to be able to go to school hopeful and energized, knowing we can reach each and every child on a social and academic level, that the ones that are right there in front of us return home and have learned something new each day. We also want to be able to return home to our own families at night with something left to give to them as well. But most importantly, we want to give our students the best possible chance at success. And finally, we would like to extend an invitation to each of you. Our invitation is into our classrooms. Words can only paint a small picture in your mind of what we are, we and our fellow coworkers and teachers are enduring each day. In order to get the full experience and to understand the things addressed above, please take this opportunity to walk alongside of us for the day. Come see firsthand what this truly looks like.
We appreciate your time listening to our novel tonight. It's just important to put we think for smaller class sizes. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes the citizens' comments. We'll just feedback. We'll move forward. Tina, business office update.
So tonight we'll gather the comments from the budget comments. In early January, we're also scheduling budget meetings with our building principals where hopefully they'll gather more feedback from their staff in their buildings. Through those discussions, the educational priorities considered and used will be included in the forecast presentation at the January thirtieth school board meeting. Any questions?
Awesome, thank you. Move on to consent agenda. Everybody's sent that meeting, Clay? Oh. Come on in. How are you?
Good.
Thank you for coming. No problem. You can stand or sit, whatever you're more comfortable with. Since you're brand new, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm Olivia, I'm a senior here at Monticello. I'm stepping in for Sam and Brady tonight just because they were both busy. I'm in a couple of sports and clubs, actually just came from practice, so don't stand too close. But yeah, so I'm kind of just here to step in for them today.
Awesome, thank you.
So the high school is rocking and rolling right now. In terms of sports, all of our winter sports are full steam ahead. We've got lots of holiday invites coming up over this break. I know in terms of basketball, we are recognizing Grace Swatzky after one of our games and retiring her jersey. So that'll be super cool to be a part of. In terms of fine arts and like clubs, we've got lots of holiday concerts that have been happening. Band has had a combo concert with our eighth graders that happened on the fifth. Orchestra has also had a combo concert with our eighth graders on the twelfth. And even tonight, our choir has had, is having actually right now their concert there tonight. We've also, our band and choir have been going to other buildings, school offices, and our Mississippi Shores Senior Living Center and Rotary Club and performing at those buildings and kind of spreading that holiday cheer, I guess. So that's a cool opportunity for those that participate in that. We've also got a math team competition at the high school that happened today. In terms of other winter activities that are just happening at our school, we've had a blood drive that happened on the ninth. That was put on by our National Honor Society and Memorial Blood Drive Center. I, I couldn't participate in it, but I heard that there was a great turnout with kids that could help out. Unified shopping also was something that happened. I did get to go with that and that also happened on the ninth. But we got to go, some kids that are in Unified PE and go take some friends shopping and have kind of a day out at crossroads. So that was a ton of fun. We've also been doing the Giving Tree that is put on by our student counselor, counselors at our school. Those are, that's supported by like our small businesses, our teachers, and churches. The gifts and hygiene packs are distributed to students at our school later this week. In terms of school, we've got twelve days left of the semester, which is crazy standing here as a senior. Like I, in terms of like school, I got lots of finals I'm ready for, but like I'm halfway through my senior year, which is mind-blowing. Like I don't, it's hard to comprehend. We also had Saturday math prep a couple Saturdays ago. There was a hundred and seventy-five students that came and packed our library and cranked out math for two hours, which is fantastic to see that kids are taking that time out of their Saturday to come be a part of that. Our flex is also something that I've really noticed I'm appreciating. It's usually Tuesdays and Thursdays. This week I know it's adjusted to Tuesdays and Wednesdays, just as kind of that extra work time with studying for finals. I really appreciate all that time that we have and it, it's only an hour twice, but it, it is a lot of time. I know I spend a lot of time in our math pod and a lot of the time in our Spanish area as well and just getting extra help in those classes where maybe I feel like I'm struggling and it really helps kind of find that time to be able to make it into teachers knowing that I'm busy after schools with sports and whatnot, so. Yeah, that's kind of what our high school is looking like right now. Any questions?
Is this a dangerous question if I ask you if you have any decisions about your future?
You go for it. I mean, I have not yet. I'm looking to play basketball. Right now, top on my list is Concordia Morehead. I got a couple others on the list, but that's kind of the one I'm kind of steering towards so far.
Awesome. Board members, any? You did a great job.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you guys. Have a good night.
You too. You can get out of here if you want. Hey, now we'll move on to consent agenda. All board members are sent this previously. Any questions, discussion about the consent agenda? If not, an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those name motion passes five zero. Mr. Olson, collaborative connections.
So we have some donations running forward here today. The first one is from Cargill Kitchen Solutions, seven thousand five hundred dollars. So per building, it brings down to fifteen hundred dollars and it's dedicated for new library books. The Wrench Way, five hundred dollars, funds for industrial tech automotive department. And so two, two going into our students here and hopefully getting some more resources into their hands. And the third one is Dan Olson State Farm Insurance, a thousand dollars. Monticello High School Magic Leadership Program. So I'll give a mark to our students. I think that's pretty cool to, you know, to find the areas that they directly support students, so.
Awesome, very fortunate that these continue to come our way. Any questions or comments? So this is a resolution.
Therefore be resolved by the Monticello School Board number eight eight two to gratefully accept the following donations. From Cargill Kitchen Solutions, seven thousand five hundred, one thousand five hundred per building for new library books. From Wrench Way, five hundred dollars, funds for industrial tech automotive department. And from Dan Olson State Farm Insurance, one thousand dollars for the MHS Magic Leadership Programming.
Seconded.
Excellent. Motion read by, or resolution made by Jennifer, seconded by Jamie. To approve the Cargill Solutions, Wrench Way, and Dan Olson State Farm Insurance donations to the Monticello Schools, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those name motion passes five zero. Next, we'll move on to the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. Been vetting this out a little bit with some conversations. We have an action item tonight, so under the assumption is the final approval of the calendar, correct?
Good evening, that is correct. The, the board obviously got a chance to hear a little bit about the calendar and the process at the last meeting, but I'll just run through it a little bit again tonight for the sake of the public audience. We several years ago started with a calendar committee and due to COVID, kind of had to pull back off of that. But what we did during that time is kept focused on keeping the same basic tenants that the calendar committee had created when they laid out the calendar and trying to emulate it essentially as best as we could to fit each new calendar year. So that's what we've done the last couple of years. When you look at this year, I think that you'll see a lot of the same things. One of the things that we've talked about, as the board knows, is try to increase student contact days just a little bit to give us, one, a little bit of a buffer in the case of inclement weather, but also just because of the importance of having students in seats in, in classroom where they have the opportunity to learn, especially coming off of pandemic as we have. So this year's calendar goes up to, the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, excuse me, goes up to a hundred and seventy days for students in grades six through eleven and a hundred and sixty-eight days for students in grades one through five, which is a two to four day increase over what we've had the last few years. Other than that, when you look at the calendar, the, you know, one of the, one of the big changes that you'll see and that's to get those extra student days is that we do go a few days into June in twenty-three, twenty-four, but still falling in line with what a lot of other districts around the state do. Our spring break falls at the end of March. There's a couple of workshop days at the end of semester one in January for our secondary. One of the changes that was made from the last time that the board saw this was after talking with staff representatives at the elementary, we actually moved around a couple of days. Previously, we've had two early dismissals the week of Thanksgiving for elementary conferences. After talking with staff at the elementary, they thought it just, those, those get to be two really long days and it's two early dismissals and tough days to be productive for the students. So we instead moved to one full day of school, which will be followed by evening conferences on that Monday. And then Tuesday will be a no school day, so they, at the elementary level only, so they can have conferences all day, just like they do in the spring, late winter, spring. Just to try to make kind of both ends a bit more productive. And then they replaced that school day on January twenty-third because elementary feels like they don't need those two days at the end of a semester like a secondary does because they obviously have to flip over their instruction and teachers have a lot more to do to prepare for the second semester. So I really appreciate the elementary feedback and, and elementary administration was on board with the change, so we, we moved that one forward. Otherwise, it's, it's, as you know, we've talked about, it's really just trying our best to balance the needs of all of our stakeholders, right? We're trying to first create a calendar that works well for students and then a calendar that works well for our staff and the calendar that works well for our families as well. So there is no perfect calendar unfortunately, but we hope that we're bringing the best possible one forward to you guys here tonight. Any questions?
And you've added a day in April, is that correct?
That, it was actually moved from April twenty-fifth. The no school day was moved from April twenty-fifth to January second. That concern also came from the elementary, just they have a lot of state testing around that time and having two no school days at that time felt overwhelming, so we just moved it to January second.
Questions, anybody? I know we've seen, talked about this several times already, but any final suggestions or questions? Okay. This is an action item.
I move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four calendar as presented.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four calendar as presented by Clay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those name motion passes five zero. Thank you. Do you want to just stay up there, Clay?
Thank you, I will. I get to roll right through a few here. Next one's a quick one. This was an oversight on my end, so I apologize for that. When we were scheduling our, scheduling out our regular meetings on the first and the third for the new year, the two of our regular meetings fall on no meeting dates, Martin Luther King Junior Day and President's Day, so we need to move those. So all I need is an action tonight to move January sixteenth to January thirtieth and move February twentieth to February twenty-seventh. And those will still be our regular meetings those months.
I move that we accept the calendar adjustments for the no meeting days as presented by Clay Swatzky.
Seconded.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Jamie to accept the calendar adjustment dates of board meetings presented by Clay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those name motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Let's Clay again.
Lastly, I have the polling place resolution as the board. Lastly, I have the polling place resolution. As the board is aware, this is a resolution that we pass annually at the last meeting of December, just essentially in the event of an election, in an off-year election, an off-year election year, excuse me. And so it's a fora combined polling place. We work with the city of Monticello to make sure that we are designating the same polling places as them. They also designate this polling place every December, again, just in case of, as the board is aware, there is no current plan for an election during the twenty-twenty-three year. But this is something that we do annually, just as a precaution. And so, sorry, I should state that the combined polling place will be the Monticello Community Center Gym, which is where it was two years ago, and where it's been for a few years now. We appreciate the city's cooperation, and obviously try to pay it back with using the high school for bigger elections now.
This is a resolution? Your last one ever?
I suppose.
Maybe not ever, but...
A lot of highlighting.
Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number eight-eight-two, State of Minnesota, as follows. You did not highlight number one, do you want me to read number one?
I don't, I think just number two.
Okay. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section two-oh-five-A point eleven, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. Combined polling place, Monticello Community Center Gym, five-oh-five Walnut Street, Monticello, Minnesota, five-five-three-six-two. This combined polling place serves as, serves all territory and independent school district number eight-eight-two, located in Becker Township, Big Lake City, and Big Lake Township, Buffalo Township, Clearwater Township, Maple Lake Township, Monticello, and Monticello Township, Otsego, and Silver Creek Township, all in Wright County, Minnesota.
Second.
Resolution made by Jennifer, seconded by Melissa, to approve the polling place resolution as presented by Clay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, guys.
Nope, thanks, Clay.
Tina, I'm not leaving because you're up. I'm going to my son's choir concert.
Don't you tell me.
That's okay, you got the twenty-minute version last, December fifth. So tonight, we're, I'm asking for the approval of our levy for payable two thousand twenty-three. We had our full truth and taxation presentation on December fifth, and I think that's saved in our archive as it was recorded. If anybody needs help sleeping at night, they can watch that. But our overall levy is increasing eight-hundred-ninety-six-thousand, or about seven-point-three percent. A lot of that has to do with inflation adjustments to our voter-approved referendum. So I don't know if there's any other questions before you approve the levy for tonight.
Point out that this is, this is controlled by the legislature, not by us.
Correct. A lot of the school levies are formulas based on tax values and enrollment. A lot of this is based on those things, and forty pages of formulas and kind of results to this overall.
I believe this motion needs to be to the max, correct?
Nope, that's in September. So this is approving...
Perfect.
...the levy as presented.
This is an action item.
I move that we approve the twenty-twenty-three levy as presented by Tina.
Seconded.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Jamie, to approve the two thousand twenty-three levy as presented by Tina, Director of Business Services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes four zero. Clay, can you clarify that Melissa left? Okay, Superintendent Olson, school start time update?
Yeah, just a quick update here today. Starting in January, a task force that meeting through months of January, February, and March, there are dates on the calendar at this time. The task force is made up of seven parents, seven certified staff members, three administrators, board members, and three students. So we start working as a, as a team to look at both sides of, say both sides of the plate. Right now, we start our elementary students, our secondary students, and the research is, is looking at if we change those times and started our elementary time, school students earlier, would that be good for kids, and looking at kids, pre-teen, trying to make decisions that are good for all kids. So we have a lot of work to do. We have done a few things already. We've done kind of a dipstick type of survey, just to see what people's thoughts were in teaching. We had a discussion, had a coffee chat, coffee chat, around forty people there. It was a good, very healthy discussion. I think what we realized is that we were more alike, and just wanting all of our kids to be healthy. That's what we learned. So, in that coffee chat, I think there may have been some notions that the district was already going to make change without, really, which is starting our research, and we will move through this task force type of research at this time, and be able to start giving you more detailed reports as we move forward with that.
Many more conversations will be held. At this time, we're going to take a little pause to celebrate our one school board member still here, Jennifer, and before Superintendent Olson has some things to do, and just like to say a few things. So Jennifer, this is how many years?
I've served five years.
Five years, okay. I was fortunate enough to sit on the negotiation team with Jennifer, and probably the greatest thing about having Jennifer on the negotiation team is that sometimes emotions, and there's lots of emotions sometimes in negotiations and discussions, and she was always most calming influence about looking at things from a different perspective, and just kind of slowing everything down, and trying to find a way to look at things from both sides. So that is so appreciative of, of the time I've spent with her, because she's always just had a different perspective, partly because of her background and what she does. It's been very helpful for us in many times in the boards, but she's always just, it's very calm and cool and collected, and it's just, sometimes it's very important to have for us and the board. So I appreciate everything that you've brought the last five years and that you've done for us, so, been great work. Yep.
I'll jump in, and what we have here is a charcuterie, charcuterie board. What's cool about this board, as you know, students in, these industrial tech programs, is involved in doing something special to honor what you've served, is very important. Along with the charcuterie board that I have for you, I also have something from the MSBA, but a lot of people don't, goes into behind the scenes of a school board. And so for you, this, this board is stating that you have completed a hundred or more hours of attendance through MSBA trainings in four years, and it's a milestone that MSBA shoots as a very big milestone. Not a lot of school board members hit that. It just says a lot about who you are as a person. I first met you seven years ago, and you are very involved in the community, connecting with people who have kids, whether it was Moms Club, or seeing you on both PTOs, Eastview, and seeing you at middle school, working with very involvement, and also now, even back at Eastview Task Force with childhood. You're very involved in trying to serve students and staff, and take care of the kids, and sometimes those things don't get recognized. It's, it's hard as a district four-thousand-three-hundred to be everywhere that everyone sees you, but hopefully people get into those spots to know the hours that go behind the scenes are well beyond a school board meeting. I think sometimes people, it's just that. The times that I got to spend with you, working on PTOs, to directly serve staff, and, and tremendous, because I see all the hours that you've put on. And I'm going to piggyback on this one last thing Jeff has talked about, but we do a monthly meeting with EMM, and it's probably one of the things that I'm, and it's, it's instead of meeting confer, which is, you know, more by contract, we know what's going on and how to help our staff, because we're constantly meeting, listening, and problem solving. You're there, you're, like Jeff said, offering that convoy to support and help us, guide us, make decisions for people. So I want to thank you out of my heart. I've enjoyed all the time together. I know we're going to do a lot more work together, so.
Thank you.
You should get a picture. You have a suit on.
Oh, yeah.
In the front, get a picture.
As, as we're going up, I think we'll get a picture taken, but I can talk about Candace too. I've known Candace as long as I've known probably Jeff and Kathy, because I got to serve their fam, principal at Candace for about fifteen years, and she also has been instrumental in caring for kids and being there for them. And other than Candace, that I'm really, I'll, I'll wait.
I probably could keep going, but... Oh, yeah. Keep going.
What I love about Candace, and so she's watching live, she's making up a few sayings on the meal today, but Candace is, does a great job of just being like a manager for me, when she sees things through meetings or through the readings that the board members give. The board members get a weekly letter every week, but then they also have board packets, so I'll always read it two nights a week. And Candace will have questions, set up meetings with me, and really do it, does an amazing job of diving in, but she also takes care of, I mean, she can tell if something's going on, she reaches out, she's that, that person that has a really knack for seeing what's going on in the district, and for you personally. So, another person that we're gonna, we're gonna miss. Obviously, I always look forward to the future, but you, you want to really celebrate and recognize the places that we've been, and we've had a lot of challenges through the last few years, but we've endured those challenges with Candace and Jennifer, I think remarkably, in compared to other districts. So I know we still have our challenges out there, but we'll keep working together to overcome them hopefully.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I just want to thank you both for your service to our community, pouring into our kids and the youth. Our future is huge, and the amount of time and effort that goes into it, a lot of people don't understand. So, I thank you, and I hope you don't, I hope you still stay involved, so.
Thank you.
You should probably not need a new resolution reader.
You guys are gonna have to figure that out.
I think Jennifer's literally read every resolution for the last four years. So, somebody else has got to take all the responsibility. But when I'm board chair, I'll take, when I'm not board chair, I'll take it over then, so.
I have one more school board member recognition tonight, also from MSBA. MSBA would like to recognize Kathy Zbarth for attending and completing the leadership workshop series, phases one, two, three, and four, which is also one of their milestones. So it's not allowed to be a new record.
So, yeah. Complete all four of those already?
Yeah. So, we do have a MSBA...
You didn't tell me about this one.
I'd like to keep you, keep you on your toes.
I know you get a pay bump too with that.
Did you say?
Free water.
Hostility room.
Awesome. Well, thank you Kathy for doing that. Okay, last item. Tina, it's all yours. Shutting the pool down.
There you go. So, let's see, I think it was in early December that we had a pre-bid meeting for our pool filter system and surge tank. So we had, I think, three potential bidders show up at that, and when we opened bids on December thirteenth, we had three bidders? How do I, I'm normally pretty good at this. You're moving it for me. So here's our process that we did in September, October. We kind of were discovering that we were having some issues with the pool, and trying to get some cost estimates on what was happening. On the fourteenth, you approved calling for bids. On the November seventeenth and twenty-fourth, we put an ad in the newspaper to call for bids on the pool equipment. We had our pre-bid meeting, and then again, our bid opening on the thirteenth. I believe the next couple slides are just pictures. I don't get out in like certain areas of the building often, so I had to take advantage of taking pictures. So we have our surge tank. You can kind of see the condition that it's in, so, not very well. And those three cylinders, if you will, are the sand traps, and one of the alternates that we added to the bid was to put isolation valves in each of those sand traps, so if one breaks down, we can seal that off and still keep the pool running and not have to drain it. Also, we did another alternate with the entrapment covers. There is Abigail Taylor's law, where these have to be up to par every, I think, twenty years, so these covers are getting close to the end of life, so it makes sense when the pools drain to have those replaced as well. So like I said, we had three bidders, and the lowest bid was Aqua Logic for their base bid of a hundred and forty thousand. Alternate one with those all isolation valves of another three thousand. Alternate four with the entrapment covers. Two and three, we're not recommending for approval. There's a lint trap that may or may not be produced anymore, but they're stainless steel, and if we keep up with preventative maintenance, we can keep up with what we have. And we also did an alternate in case we wanted to do a concrete tank, surge tank, instead of, I think, getting something in, but there wasn't much of a savings with two of the bidders to do that alternate. So, just proposing tonight to approve the base bid from Aqua Logic and alternates one and four for a total bid package of a hundred, a hundred and forty-eight thousand. That was below our initial estimate. So, it pays to go for sealed bids when you're on that threshold.
I move that we approve the Aqua Logic bid as presented, which came in under bid. I'd like to note that in the action item.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Jamie, to accept the bid from Aqua Logic for the pool bid. Recommendation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes four zero. Thank you, Tina. When is that scheduled to start?
So we'll try to start this project after boys swimming. There is estimated lead time of about eight weeks on the equipment, so hopefully we'll get that in time to start after swimming.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Jamie, to adjourn the Monticello School District A-two, we're meeting December nineteenth at six fifty-four PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion passes four zero. Pose name, motion passes four zero.